We call this hearing to order. This is a hearing on PUC docket number 2025-0167, Punta Lula Water and Sanitation LLC, their application for approval of a general rate increase and revised rules, regulations, and rates. Good evening to everyone. Thank you for, thank you for being here tonight. I am Leo Asunchen, Chair of the Public Utilities Commission, and I'm joining here in this virtual public hearing with Commissioners Naomi Kawe and I believe Commissioner Yost, Colin Yost is also online. Also present is Legal Counsel for PWS, Shane Yonimori, and from the Consumer Advocates Office, Michelangelo. Today's hearing is being recorded and will later be transcribed by a court reporter. A copy of this recording will also be available on the Commission's YouTube channel. Just again, a reminder, anyone who wishes to testify, please indicate in the chat feature and we will call you in that order. We'll also have time for participants on the phone who wish to testify. All participants will be on mute until it is time to take testimony when the host will unmute people individually. State law requires that the Commission hold a public hearing whenever a public utility proposes a rate increase. This evening, the Commission is holding this public hearing for docket number 2025-0167. The purpose of this hearing is for the Commission to take testimony, not to answer any questions about the application itself. Testifiers can always contact Punta Lula Water and Sanitation, referred to PWS or the applicant, and the consumer advocate if you have questions for them. This public hearing is focused on PWS's temporary rate increase requests. Contact information for the consumer advocate and PWS's representative are available on the Commission's website, and we'll be posting that in the chat function on WebEx. So our staff will make sure that that is up there momentarily and then we'll, we'll leave it up there from time to time and put it back up there for everyone's information. PWS's requests are described in detail in its application filed on February 14, 2025, and in the hearing notice those published in the Hawaii Tribune Herald and West Hawaii Today on February 27 and March 6, 13, and 19. In summary, applicant is requesting Commission approval of the following: A revenue increase. A 2025 TESIER Temporary Rate Increase Revenue Requirement of $639,505, which represents an increase of $617,419 for its water and wastewater operations for approximately 2,795% over the pro forma revenue amount of $22,090 at present rates. They are also requesting tariff changes, changes to PWS's existing rules and regulations, water rate schedules and sewer rate schedules, including increasing the deposit requirement from $25 earning 6% interest to $50 with no accrued interest, which is Rule 5, raising the charge for reconnection of water service from $25 to $50 during regular hours, and from $50 to $75 for after hours. And so that is Rule 17. And lastly, removing the monthly charge for irrigation services from the water rate schedule. There are also, PWS is also asking for other relief, including any interim rate increase as may be just and reasonable under the circumstances. As I mentioned, the scope of the public hearing tonight is limited to the issues listed at the outset of the hearing and that are included in PWS's temporary rate increase application. Some ground rules for testifying this evening. The applicant will be given eight minutes to discuss their application, and the consumer advocate will be given eight minutes to explain its role in the process and present any testimony that they may have. All other testifiers will have three minutes to present testimony at this hearing. I will note at this time that we have received a number of written testimony over the past few weeks, including today, and these testimonies have already been distributed to the Commissioners. So just some ground rules for other testifiers. You may not give all or any portion of your allotted time to another testifier. And if you haven't done so already, you may still submit comments in writing to the Commission's online, to the Commission online at the Commission's website by email or by regular mail. We simply ask that you reference docket number 2025-0167 so that we know where to file those comments, those written comments. So if it's online comments, we'll post a link to our website where you can find the comment, the comment form. And we'll post also our email address as well as the snail mail address for the PUC. And I believe we can also, if we have the information for the consumer advocate, because I'm sure the consumer advocate would also like to see those written testimonies. If you do testify this evening, at the beginning of your testimony, please identify yourself, state whether you are testifying on behalf of an organization or as an individual, and state whether you support or oppose the applicant's request, and then go into your testimony. So with that, I do have a list of people that have already provided public comments and I'll just read them off real quickly. We have received testimony from David Kimo Franco, Matt Baker, Jean Anne Campbell, Nora Kawachi, Kathleen Mommy, Thomas and Kristen Mizikar, James Akow, Sarah Masoner, Tomaso DS, Hugo Reyes, and Christopher Momni. That's what we got so far into our document management system posted as of maybe 15 minutes ago. So, so those, right, if you are testifying again tonight, you can simply, you know, within, within the three minutes, you can summarize or you can reread your testimony. But we do have them already and those actually have been circulated to the Commissioners. So with that, we'll begin with testimony from PWS, followed by the consumer advocate, and anyone from the public who indicated that they wish to testify on the WebEx chat feature. And then I'll go to those who are on the phone. Again, if you're on the phone at the proper time, I'll call out for the phone participants and you can then let us know if you want to testify. So with that, make sure if you do, if you joined us late, go into the chat function, type in that you want to testify and then we'll call the testifiers in that order. So Mr. Yonimori, if you want to proceed with PWS's presentation.
Mr. Silva, you're on mute.
Yep, Mr. Yonimori, you're on mute.
Hi, yes, my name is Shane Yonimori. I'm Counsel of Punta Lula Water and Sanitation LLC with respect to their application for approval of temporary rate increase. Also online is Charles Loy, CPA of Punta Lula Water and Sanitation LLC. He'll be handling the presentation today. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Charles Loy.
I want them to be able to see.
No.
Thank you. Good evening Commissioners and everyone. My name is Chuck Loy and I'm a certified public accountant with over 30 years of experience specializing in utility operations, financial management, and regulatory issues, particularly in water and wastewater and rate case filings. I'm here tonight to talk about the pressing need for a temporary rate increase for PWS, the utility that provides water and wastewater services to your community. PWS is at a critical juncture. As I detailed in my testimony filed as PWST100 in the application, this aging system has been running at a revenue deficit for years. It's outdated and struggling to keep up. The rates are being paid today were set nearly 50 years ago, back in 1977, and haven't moved since. Meanwhile, inflation has soared by over 525%, which basically means that in real times, customers today are paying less than 20% of what they would have paid in 1977 for the same service. That gap has left PWS in a financial bind, unable to sustain safe and reliable water and wastewater services without immediate action. When PWS changed ownership in 2019, it made a promise: no rate hikes for three years. That's 2020, 2021, and 2022. PWS kept that commitment. In fact, it's been subsidizing customers for over five years now, covering costs out of pocket, out of its own pocket. PWS has reached the end of the line. Over the past five years, from 2020 to 2024, PWS has racked up losses of about 1.1 million. To keep the lights on, figuratively and literally, it had to take out a $750,000 long-term loan, and more recently, a $65,000 short-term financing loan. But even with that, the utility is still teetering on the edge. Without additional support from the customers who rely on these services, water and sewer operations could grind to a halt. The financial data from 2020 to 2024, adjusted for what we expect in 2025, make it pretty clear. PWS can't go on like this. The temporary rate revenues total $639,505, an increase of $617,415 over the current revenue of just $22,090. Now, a big chunk of this increase, about $167,500, will go toward repairing four broken fire hydrants. We had originally planned to tackle those in the current general rate application, but after customers raised fire safety concerns at the February 7th Status Conference with the Public Utility Commission, PWS knew they couldn't wait. Without the hydrant repairs though, the revenue would drop to 44, or $449,915. It's still a significant jump, but one that reflects the bare minimum to cover operations, maintenance, repairs, and administrative costs through 2025 or until the general rate finally can be resolved. Let me be clear. PWS isn't looking to profit here. This increase is about survival, not a rate of return. There's no rate of return in this filing. There's no depreciation expense in this filing. There's no income taxes. The proposed rates are designed to keep services running and reliable. They include fixed charges and tiered volumetric rates for both water and sewer. These details you can find in the PUC's and the PWS public hearing notices. The rate design goal is twofold: to cover the cost and encourage efficient use. PWS has laid out all the numbers in detailed exhibits and schedules showing why the temporary rate relief is not just necessary, but justified. PWS has asked the PUC to approve these rates and grant any additional relief they see fair. If this temporary increase brings in more than what is actually needed, PWS has committed to refunding customers or applying credits to their bills following the PUC's guidelines. PWS, again, PWS is not here to take more than what's required to keep the system going. The bottom line is this: PWS can't continue without this rate increase. Earlier this year, the operator told P, the operator of the system, told PWS they'd shut down after February 28, 2025. But PWS managed to negotiate an extension. But that lifeline depends on their financial footing. And right now, the financial footing is crumbling. This temporary rate increase is the bridge we need to keep water flowing and sewers working while PWS works with the PUC and the consumer advocate toward a long-term fix. Our goal in this proceeding is to show the PUC and everybody impacted why this increase is essential for the utility's health and service reliability. These are tough times and we know this isn't easy to hear. PWS thanks you for your understanding and asks for your consideration as we navigate this together. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Loy. And just checking with counsel, any other testimony from PWS?
Nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Yonimori. Turned now to the consumer advocate, Mr. Angelo.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, members of the community. Thank you for taking your time tonight to share your concerns by participating in this meeting. We appreciate also that you've previously shared your concerns with us, our office, and filing your comments within the docket. Good evening as well, Chair Asunchen, Commissioner Kawe, and Commissioner Yost. My name is Michelangelo and I serve as the Executive Director of the Division of Consumer Advocacy in the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, or also known as the Consumer Advocate. Members of the public, by providing your experience, our office is aware of the understandably significant and ongoing concerns and questions regarding Punta Lula Water and Sanitation's quality of service, whether PWS will continue to provide that service, and the size of the proposed increase. To point out a few of several examples, there's the missing and out-of-service fire hydrants. Those are extremely concerning from a public safety perspective. Additionally, regarding other quality of service issues, we're aware that as recently as last week, customers were asked to undertake emergency conservation because of failed pumping equipment. And there have been long-term and ongoing concerns regarding leaking storage tank, and this is to name just a few of these ongoing issues. I'm here tonight together with several of my colleagues to share with the community how the Division of Consumer Advocacy, or DCA, advocates for the interests of utility customers before the Public Utilities Commission, also known as the Commission. The DCA advocates for the provision of safe and reliable utility services delivered cost-effectively, equitably, and aligned with the state's clean energy and climate goals. We appreciate being able to listen to the community's comments and concerns regarding PWS's application for approval of a temporary rate increase and the revised rules and regulations. Chair Asunchen has already discussed the substantial, the details of the substantial increase. I won't run through them again, but 2,795% above revenue at current rates is, is extremely concerning to our office. So the consumer advocate will independently review the reasonableness of PWS's requested revenue increase. And as part of our analysis, we have been conducting discovery and will continue to do so. We request this data and information to evaluate the company's support for their requested revenue increases. And later in this proceeding, we will submit the results of our analysis and recommendations to the Commission for their decision on PWS's requested relief. Tonight, however, we are here to listen to the community's concerns and comments regarding the proposed increase. Any concerns and comments that you may have are vitally important part of both our evaluation and the Commission's valuation of PWS's request. We strongly encourage the public to continue to express your opinions and concerns to the Commission and our office regarding the proposal and the impact that this request might have on you if the Commission approves the requested increase. This will assist both the Commission and the consumer advocate in our work. As I mentioned, we are extremely concerned over the size of this increase and we're working to ensure that any increase in rates is focused only on what is needed to enable continued delivery of water and wastewater services. We see this as part of a process where PWS will need to propose a plan to address the ongoing safety and system reliability issues. As we move forward, please feel free to contact the Consumer Advocates Office at any time to share your thoughts, concerns, and questions regarding this or any other utility matter. Thank you for the opportunity to offer these comments and I can, our, our contact information will be provided in our filed testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Angelo. We'll go now to those who are on WebEx and we do have a list going. First up, Jeff Silva, representing Colony One AOA. Mr. Silva?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Thank you, honorable Commissioners. My name is Jeff Silva and I'm the President and Representative of Colony One AOA. And I'm also an owner at Colony One since 2013 and a resident of Kaua for over 25 years. We are in opposition to the application as written. We are thankful the consumer advocate is looking closely at the issue, but we would like to provide further testimony. I am individually and collectively directly affected by the application filed by PWS. I am also a Grade Four Distribution System Operator and a Grade One Treatment Operator. Colony One is comprised of 76 condominiums and is served by the applicant. We have no other option for water, wastewater, and fire suppression. We literally depend on PWS for life, health, and safety. Colony One believes in paying their fair share for these services. However, PWS has failed to provide sound evidence why we should support such a large increase. It in fact appears that PWS wishes to pass on unjustified expenses to the users, including the servicing of loans that were not approved and have little documentation of where the money was spent. Today, the ratepayers of PWS could be in a very different situation. We could literally have no water and no timeframe for when service would resume because just last Tuesday, PWS's only well went down. If the problem had been a burn pump, the reservoir, reservoir had just days of water in it. Can you imagine the stress such an event caused? I worked directly with PWS's operator, Alan Fukamizu, Fukamizu, to locate an electrician because he had exhausted his options. I coordinated with him and had an electrician on site within an hour and 10 minutes. By that time, Colony One had already enacted their Water Emergency Response Plan Code Red and was in full conservation mode and all owners had been notified. At 5:30, 38 PM, PWS officially notified Colony One of a water pumping issue. A full five hours later, this notification stated, "If immediate water conservation measures are not taken, the reservoir will be depleted within one day." In fact, the reservoir had three to four days of water, but whoever sent this notice probably didn't think about the potential panic this may cause. Luckily, the problem was found the following day to be an electrical issue and the pump still worked. This very easily could have gone the other way and both Alan and I knew this. An operator should be supported by a management team that understands the importance of emergency preparedness and consumer notification. The last thing the operator should be doing at a time like this is locating phone numbers and notifying customers. Time is of the essence once you know a reservoir cannot be filled. To my knowledge, PWS has never had a manager skilled in utility services and in fact, no longer has a manager at all. This may explain a five-hour delay in an emergency like this one. Colony One wishes to thank the Commission for the opportunity to provide this testimony today and we sincerely wish to support your efforts in finding solutions that are, that are tenable. Mahalo Nui Loa.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. Next, I have T. Goish, hope I'm pronouncing that right.
Yes, you did, Goish. Very good. Hello.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you to the board. Thank you to the board for providing the opportunity for public input in the matter of the Punta Lula Water and Sanitation LLC Temporary Rate Increase Application, docket 2025-0167. I oppose the request. My name is Tamara Goish and I have been an owner at Colony One since 1995, 30 years. I joined the AOA board in March 2022 in great part because of concern over the visibly and rapidly declining condition of the sea mountain lands and infrastructure, what is now known as the Black Sand Beach LLC properties and the utility, PWS. I am on the Colony One Board and fully support all testimony and input provided by Colony One Board President Jeff Silva. Today, however, I testify as an individual condo owner. I am submitting written testimony which details several specific concerns related to the takeaways from the original order number 36473 certifying Eva Liu as the owner-operator of PWS LLC, namely the reasonable conclusion that she was to remedy the derelict condition of the utility documented in the required condition report created by Aqua Engineers within three years, and she had the wherewithal to do so. Additionally, I am concerned that Ms. Liu has not billed herself as required by the original tariff and compounds that oversight by removing from the proposed tariff the meters that likely serve the Black Sand Beach LLC land she owns, further putting the existing customers on the hook for the income she should have been, been providing through proper billings to her lands. I also questioned Ms. Liu's unsubstantiated contention that she is essentially broke, given that she is a foreign national and could likely have offshore funds that she is not disclosing. Further, I am dismayed by Ms. Liu apparently attempting to force PWS customers to pay consulting and legal work related to her resort development scheme. I am confused by exhibits which give conflicting information about possible stock issuances. And finally, while I understand that the utility rates are not currently at the usual and customary levels that prevail today, I would remind the PUC that that was a decision made by the several owners of PWS over the decades. One presumes the profits they made on other operations such as the golf course and the restaurant more than made up for the utility losses. But to impose thousands-fold increases in one rate change to make up for their poor ownership and operation of utility, that is their failure to repair and maintain, is patently unfair. The burden of oversight does not fall on the customers of a utility. The PUC with the transfer of ownership to Eva Liu made it abundantly clear that it was her development gamble, but alas, there was no monitoring or effective oversight. Please don't unduly punish, punish the utility customers for that failure on the part of the state by approving obscene rate increases. Finally, Ms. Liu's record managerial, financial, operational, raised serious doubts about her ability and even intent to responsibly expend any income that comes her way from rate increases. Any increases approved should come with a stipulation that the income will be overseen by an entity to include a neutral trustee of some sort as well as representatives of the current billed customers. To do otherwise, requiring customers such as myself to pay Ms. Liu funds which she could squander on who knows what without fulfilling her responsibilities as the owner-operator of PWS LLC would be a violation of the public trust and the oversight responsibilities of the PUC. Thank you for your attention to my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Goish. Next up, I have David Kimo Franco. Mr. Franco?
Kimo, are you on?
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you can.
Great.
Just like the Verizon commercial.
Aloha. David Kimo Franco here. I'm an attorney representing Ieve Hanau Okaina and the Center for Biological Diversity. We've given you some written testimony. I want to point out that the issue before you is not limited to crunching financial numbers. It's, it's much broader than that. You have to also, it's not that the PWS provide, needs to charge money, but it also needs to provide a service. And so I want to talk about that service. And I want to make three points. First, the data. There is a very large discrepancy between There is a, a very large discrepancy between the amount of groundwater that's pumped and the amount of wastewater that's treated. The Honolulu, in Honolulu, uh, the Board of Water Supply estimates that approximately eighty percent of groundwater delivered winds up as wastewater. But the data that has been provided to you shows that less than ten percent of the water that's pumped ends up treated in the sewage treatment plant. That suggests huge, significant problem in management and stewardship. And this needs to be really vigorously investigated. Service is a problem and an issue you folks need to take seriously. So, the second major issue I want to address is, uh, the mismanagement, bad stewardship, and poor planning. To get an, an emergency interim rate increase like this shows all three. Mismanagement, lack of long-term planning, and bad stewardship. Um, was, what was pointed out years ago is that there needs to be a new wastewater treatment facility. A new wastewater treatment facility would be cheaper than emergency repairs to equipment that's outdated. If you, if you, um, allow any increase, it must be on conditions of better management. And one of them is for, um, PWS to provide you a plan to, a financial and engineering plan to build a new wastewater treatment plant, which would be more environmentally, um, uh, suitable and cheaper to operate. Um, this would save everyone money in the long term rather than doing a rush job, uh, and, and rush repairs of equipment. The third thing we'd like to point out, as others, as others have mentioned, is it's not appropriate for this interim rate increase to be used to pay off any loans. Uh, the seven-hundred-fifty-thousand-dollar loan was not approved by this commission. It is void. It cannot and should not be paid off, nor should a rate increase be used to pay for attorney's fees. Um, there is a reasonable, I just want to give you a heads up. There's a reasonable possibility that we will be filing a motion to intervene in this case because there's a, a lot of, um, details that we can't cover in three minutes, three minutes, and there's a lot of information you folks need to know before decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frankel. Next up, I have Nadine. I don't have a last name, but Nadine, are you on? Last. Is Nadine on? It's now. Nope. Okay. If she returns, we'll have her flag herself again. Uh, next up, I have Donna.
Am I here now?
Sure. Go ahead, Ms. Barnett.
Okay. This is Nadine.
Nadine. Okay, let's go to Nadine first.
Okay. Yes, I just wanted to testify. I do not know all, all the history and I also am not a professional attorney or anything like that. But I do realize that our rates at, at the present time are unsuitable to maintain anything. So I am in support of a rate increase. Um, I talked to my son in Aurora, Colorado. Um, they pay seventy-five dollars a month for water and sewer. Um, and a hundred and fifty a month in the summertime. So I, I do feel like that a rate increase is, um, is in line. As far as here, here, talking about the water pump versus the sewage output, I do know that the county uses a whole lot of water. They have a separate sewage, uh, septic system. Uh, so that might account for some of the discrepancies. I do realize that if they don't get the rate increase, then I, because I live in Kalina Gulf Estates, um, I am out of water. And, uh, as of now, my property is pretty much worthless. So I, I do feel like there needs to be a meeting of the minds and that something needs to happen, including a rate increase. I'm not sure what it should be. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Nadine. Just to clarify, Nadine, you are a customer of PWS or a resident in the service territory?
Yes, I'm both.
All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, next up, Donna Barnett. Ms. Barnett, are you on?
Hi, yes, I'm on.
All right, there you are. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I, I am Donna Barnett and I am a, an owner at Colony One. Um, and I oppose this rate increase. Um, we've been owners here for four years in Punta Loo. We've uh, just been made aware of this potential temporary rate increase for our water and service, services by PWS. We do understand that a partial rate increase is justified, but the increase that's asked for is far out of line. It's not in any way reasonable or backed up by documentation. Um, we're abruptly being presented with this twenty-six-hundred percent increase and people are talking about percentages, but you know, that's, that's talking about bringing our current rate of approximately thirty dollars per month for condo here at Colony One to over five-hundred dollars per month for water. Does, I mean, this is Kau'ua and as my husband says, not Monte Carlo. So that's a lot of money to be asking consumers to pay for water in, um, this quickly of a time period to switch from thirty to five-hundred a month. Um, PWS seeks to take advantage of us as users by passing on what we believe are costs unrelated to the water system from years past. PWS's mismanagement can't continue. PWS has repeatedly failed to meet promises that it's made to the PUC and to the community. This has been our experience since we've been here and since this has all started. The majority of users believe that PWS mismanaged the system and misappropriated funds that should have been dedicated to it for many other different purposes. Colony One desires a competent and affordable solution for our water sewer and fire suppression management. These, um, these are requirements for health and safety. We want an effective long-term solution and we believe that PWS has shown a grotesque lack of ability to appropriate user-generated funds and an inability to properly manage a public utility, for that matter. In conclusion, I don't believe the application should be approved. Mahalo for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Barnett. All right. Uh, next I have Elsa Dedman. Ms. Dedman, are you on? Taking a minute to pop up here? Or she's unmuted? Can, um, Ms., Ms. Dedman, can you unmute yourself? Okay, uh, we'll come back to you. We'll try to troubleshoot what's happening there. Um, um, Ron Ebert. Mr. Ebert, are you on?
Aloha, Kau'ua.
There you are.
Yes, my name is Ron Ebert. Uh, my wife and I are the longest living people continuously residents of this area. Probably the longest customers of PWS through all of its ups and downs. But that isn't what I want to talk about. Several people have mentioned fire suppression. I know the PUC is in Honolulu. You guys had a fire on a single-story, uh, one-resident structure yesterday. They had twelve fire apparatus there and they had forty-four firefighters. I've been the captain of the volunteer fire company in Pahala for probably twenty-five years and, and I've taken on being the captain of the Nali who fired volunteer fire company and uh, for about five years. And people, if you understood the remoteness of this area, it's a rural area. We have to have water and we have to have, uh, the fire hydrants repaired. I know that in the uh, proposal that the gentleman offered that they were going to repair some of the fire hydrants with this proposal. And just based on the public safety aspect, uh, not to mention the, the health aspect, which people are not going to be able to, uh, flush their toilets or bathe or wash their clothes unless they have water. But the public safety aspect, I would strongly urge you to approve this, uh, proposal. We have to have water. And I think people in Honolulu, the attorney that kind of, um, you know, is recommending based on whatever, you know, more studies, more studies, more studies. We can study this thing to death in people's homes and there could be lives lost. I would recommend that you, uh, look at Lahaina and what happened there. And that's all I have to say. And thank you very much for letting me speak and I hope you guys have the best interest of our lives and safety, the residents that actually live here full-time. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Ebert. I'll go back to Elsa Dedman. Ms. Dedman, uh, we know you're in the chat, but, uh, could you try to unmute yourself on your side? What? No, she went already. Right there. Yeah, she's work. Okay. We have your chat. Okay, um, as soon as you get on, I'm gonna, there's one more person that wanted to testify in the chat, uh, in the chat, so, um, Candace Kaava. Candace, are you there?
I'm here.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Aloha, my name is Candace Kaava and, um, I am for the rate increase. So, hmm, some of people in the chat understand that I actually used to be the property manager down in Punta Loo and no longer is anymore. But I understand the dire need of this rate increase. I do back up the fact that Eva Liu has and the PWS has done significant amount of changes and the reason I can state that is because I was a part of it. Pump change, electrical, emergency backups, generators, all of those type of things that have been. I've also was a part of fixing multiple fire hydrants. And with that being said, it's our own local people who blow it by drinking, burning rubber, knocking down the fire hydrants that we literally just repaired. So when I say that I understand a lot of people's not wanting to pay for it, but they pay peanuts compared to what we pay the county, peanuts. And I don't see the biggest problem. It is a problem and it needs to be fixed. The fire hydrants need to be fixed. It is very expensive and I only know this is because I was the one who got the quotes for the fire hydrants. I was a part of making the plan with the fire department on what fire hydrants to fix and all of that. So, to be honest, this increase needs to be done. I also was well-known, um, made aware of the problem that just had the other day, well, last week. And in fact, the electrician that fixed it is my electrician. So, I get it. This is a dire need. Mind you, a lot of people from Colony One have issues with it. But do they live there every single day? That they will be affected by it every single day? No. The people who will be directly impacted by this a hundred percent is the people that live in Kalana Estates. Because they're there every single day. They live there. People in Colony One come and go. They come, they stay for a month or two, then they leave and they rent it out. A lot of the people knew the issue with PWS and the system before they even bought the place. So I believe that this increase needs to be done. They had a free ride all this time paying peanuts for their water. People, I mean, just like the commissioners, you guys all know how much you guys pay. I pay almost four-hundred dollars a month every two months for my water. I don't know why these guys are being so greedy. They want her to fix the entire system, but they don't want you to, they don't want to pay for it? They want a new system, but they want no, have to pay for it? I mean, I just, I can't fathom that, really. When the county, there's a problem and the county needs to fix it, what happens? Our rates go up. Their rates haven't gone up since the nineteen seventies, really. I, I just, I just don't understand what the problem is. They want the system up and running better. Mind you, I was there when Aqua Engineering was there. Aqua came for maybe ten minutes every four days, three days max, actually, not four days, three days. Stayed for ten minutes, checked the system and gone. Alan and Kelly have been tremendous support throughout all of this. They have done so much for the new systems. Backup pumps. We, last year alone, we paid over eighty thousand dollars in just pumping because something was wrong. But did it stop Mrs. Liu from supporting every single person in Colony One and Kalana Estates? No. It didn't. She kept it going. She had to make a loan and she did it. I mean, was she supposed to call the PUC and say, excuse me, they can't flush their toilets, my wa, my pumping system is down, it's gonna overflow, can I have the permission to do it? She couldn't do that at that time. There was no time period. We could wait for that. And it's common sense, common decency that they kept the system running. Alan would come storming nights, weekends. I would get calls, fire hydrants leaking. What would you, what did we do? We made it happen. Getting call, calls two o'clock in the morning, somebody knocked over your hydrant. Coming there two o'clock in the morning, offing the hydrant with the fire department. I mean, I'm just speaking now, not as a employee, because I'm not employed by her, by somebody that was there for the last three and a half, almost four years. Seeing the change that we went through, that what we did for this community. And do you want to complain? They complained, oh, no, we don't want development, but the development would have helped. Oh, no, now that she's not doing the development, well, fine, you're not doing the development, but you still need to fix it. But we don't want to pay. I, I just honestly cannot wrap my head around this issue when it's common sense, common decency that, hey, you've been paying what? People in Kalana Estates? Twenty dollars? Forty dollars? And the only reason I know this is because I used to get the checks. Gave it to me, I send it to them. The bills, county parks, we all know how much times they flushed that toilet. How much tourists go there? You know, it's still, PWS is water. Bills maybe a thousand. Colony One sprinklers going all the time. Every place else is brown except Colony One. And yet their bill is what? In the thousands? I, I just, I honestly cannot understand. There's seventy-one units. Oh, uh, seventy-something units, excuse me. I could be wrong. In Colony One.
Ms. Ka'au, you want to summarize and wrap it up?
Yeah, no, I will. I'm just saying. I'm speaking as a public participant in this right now. Do better. Like, these people need to do better. Eva did better. She kept that system running better than Aqua Engineering ever did. And I have to admit, Alan and Kelly, they've been doing a phenomenal job from the get-go. That's all I gotta say, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ka'au. Um, just want to go back if, if Ms. Dedman. Are you able to unmute? Is she still on? If not, I do have Shannon Crutz.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I'm Shannon Crutz and I represent the twenty-eight units owned by Vacation International Time Share at Colony One. I oppose the rate increase as it has been presented. I do believe rates need to be adjusted. PWS has made virtually no improvements to the system since their purchase. They had a thorough assessment of conditions and recommended remedies at the time of their purchase. We will be affected in the short and longer term if PWS is allowed to continue to mismanage the resources as it has demonstrated since they've been involved. I look forward to a cooperative solution that provides a stable and long-term solution to those affected by PWS. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Crutz. Go back one more time to Ms. Dedman. Okay. Uh, Ms., Ms. Dedman, if you are on, uh, we'll invite you to submit, uh, written comments. Um, instead of, we're trying to troubleshoot on our side, but we can't seem to unmute you either. So it's mainly on your side. But I will go, uh, if there's anyone on the phone that wishes to testify, um, anyone with a phone number showing up? Okay, you might have to unmute them. Right, because they can't let us know. Yeah, no, no, you have, but we have to unmute you first and then you need to press star six. So those on the phone, last call. Okay, hearing none, maybe last, last call on anyone online in the chat, in the WebEx that wishes to testify that hasn't?
Hi, I would like to testify.
Sure, Mr. Koachi. Why don't you go ahead?
All right. I am, uh, it's a part of the increase. I he, I live here at Kalana Estate. And, uh, it is vital that, uh, we, uh, continue, uh, having water and a sewer system. Um, I believe, uh, Eva Liu has done her best in maintaining the system. And I solely agree with Candace Ka'au, what she said. And I actually, uh, been involved in two things, so down here. And, um, it's a, it's a necessity to, of course, you know, have water. So, uh, the, uh, the thing is, I, I think there's ways to monitor the, um, you know, money that goes to PWS and, and make sure that, you know, things are spent well. So I don't think, you know, it would be a secret. So, I mean, it could be monitored. So I think all that things could be done. So I believe that, you know, um, a rate increase and the money she needs to keep this thing going. I mean, it's, it's, it costs her a lot of money and our, like I, like the, uh, Kalana Estate residents are testifying that we haven't paid peanuts for a long time. And I fully support, you know, and rate increase. Uh, of course, you know, we always wonder what the increase is, but you know, uh, I figure, I figured that, uh, you guys can kind of help and, uh, uh, the, um, advocate can help, uh, determine that increase that it doesn't, you know, go beyond what is needed. And so I support that increase anyway. Uh, thank you for your time and my time.
Thank you, Mr. Koachi. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Yeah, uh, I saw that note, uh, that Ms. Dedman left and is trying to get back in. So give it a minute uh, for her to try come, to come back in and see if that solves her, uh, technical issues. WebEx can be quite touchy at times.
Hello, I'm here. Aloha, Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Dedman. Go ahead.
Okay, um, I'm testifying as an individual. I'm representing myself and I'm opposing the application for a race rate increase. I am Elsa Kalani Ka'au Lily Evie Dedman. I'm a property owner, resident at Punta Loo Black Sand Beach. I have several concerns. Number one, Ms. Liu has not demonstrated ethical responsibility per her contractual agreement upon purchase of the property from the previous owners. Ms. Liu agreed to terms to be fit, willing and able and to provide the water and wastewater utility services upon purchase of the property. However, Ms. Liu has failed with her legal obligation. Number two, I would be, it would be unfair to allow Ms. Liu to transfer her burden to the rate pairs. The amount of two thousand seven ninety-five percent is an unacceptable rate increase. Ms. Liu is not trustable to do the right thing and apply the revenue from the rate increase to repair and upgrade the water and waste and wastewater utility services. Ms. Liu has not proven to be an astute financial manager along with her previous incompetent performance indicating a high risk of her misappropriating the potential revenue gain from the rate increase. Ms. Liu will be utilizing the potential revenue of monies for her own personal gain to bail herself out of her other financial failures. Number three, Ms. Liu's contractual commitment to legal, moral and financially to manage the maintain, manage the maintenance, repairs and upgrade of the existing water and sewer systems. It has not now or in the past for the homeowners, renters and community to pay for the maintenance and upgrade of these systems. Number four, the inevitable risk in the rate increase potential to survive the continuum of Ms. Liu's bankruptcy status. Since Ms. Liu has no motivation in the past seven years to repair and upgrade the existing failed water and wastewater utility service since purchase, I beg the question of Ms. Liu's ability and potential to bring the return of her investment to any form of stability moving forward. In analogy, if you take an Uber shared ride for ten dollars and when you get into the car, the driver requires you to pay an additional two hundred and eighty dollars for new tires for their vehicle. You do not own the vehicle. You have never owned a vehicle and never will. Therefore, it is not your responsibility or obligation to pay the maintenance and repair of the vehicle. Mahalo Nui Loa for your time, opportunity and to be, to, to be able to allow me to present at this hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Dedman. Okay, last call. Anyone else in the chat or if you are, uh, calling in by phone? Okay, hearing none. Uh, following the conclusion of, uh, this public hearing, the commission and the consumer advocate will continue with their review of the applicant's requests. Uh, as noted in the notice of public hearing, a motion to intervene or participate in this proceeding must be electronically filed with the commission by March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Um, the process will conclude, um, after we do our review and including if any, uh, interveners or participants want to, um, you know, participate in, in this docket. Uh, it will conclude with the commission's issuance of its written decision. So with that, uh, this concludes the public hearing for docket number twenty twenty-five zero one six seven. I thank all of you, uh, for your time, uh, and your passion, uh, in this, in this matter. Um, and for your participation tonight. Uh, the commission will stand adjourned. Thank you again.